Now, we'd like to move on to the public comments part of the meeting. For this part of the meeting, similar to what we had two weeks ago, we were advised by legal counsel that we had to essentially continue the meeting but take off the live streaming. So at this time, we'll turn off the live streaming and then we'll move into the public comments.
And Mayor, can we just point out before we stop the livestream that people who want to get a copy of the entire recording of the meeting can do so by sending a request to our city recorder, Jody Bates, and then she'll send them a link to the entire recording of the meeting.
Okay, perfect. So the meeting is available. You just have to make a request to city recorder. So, thank you. So let's turn off the livestream and we'll move into the same meeting without a livestream. We've got our public comments and we've got it's like we've got about fifteen people that want to comment. we have something we're supposed to read here to tell us to all be considerate and kind. "Time has been set aside for the public to express their ideas, concerns, and comments on items not scheduled as public hearings on the agenda. Those wishing to speak are encouraged to show respect for those who serve the city. Comments should focus on issues concerning the city. Those wishing to speak should have signed in before the beginning of the meeting, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less." So we'll start, and the first person on the list is Margaret Black.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Black, an Orem citizen. As a former city council member, I have concerns about process that is going on with the city council in Proposition 2. This began with feasibility study selection with the controversial choice of a company to do it that had just been formed, had a pro-split bias, and was not the most qualified. I attended the feasibility report presentation and an additional public question and answer meeting. I noticed the lack of firm data about many considerations of importance, including realistic startup costs and dealing with special programs. These were just glossed over. I also noticed at the question and answer meeting that the mayor was in sole charge of deciding which audience questions would be answered, leaving me to wonder about the rejected questions. The four council members driving the push for the proposition have demonstrated many times their unitedly made up minds before a public meeting, with the remaining three council members often not even informed about what is going on. This is a big red flag to me because council members are not to meet together in groups of four outside of a public meeting since they form a quorum, and their discussions and decisions must be conducted in a public meeting. What this council has been doing smacks at best of dubious ethics. It seems to me that emails, texts, or phone calls between four members while not appearing in public together still accomplishes the same thing as meeting, as a quorum. This does not show respect for the duty and right of other council members to discuss, excuse me, and voice opinions, and it displays a dangerous lack of transparency. My other concern is the adversarial nature that has been fostered regarding Alpine School District. When I was on the council, the district and the city council met regularly every other month to discuss concerns and joint efforts. A lot of great things were accomplished together. Since the new mayor and council have taken office, those meetings have been discontinued. In fact, the feasibility study and vote were so rushed that informational meetings with the district didn't happen. It was very upsetting to teachers to not even have their views considered in the feasibility study. Council criticisms of Orem teachers and administrators have also been insulting and morale-deflating. My hope is that Proposition 2 is defeated because it's a very bad idea to function as a single-city school district. My other hope is that the council will work with Alpine District in positive ways, and if a split is needed down the road, do it in cooperation with the district and other communities. A united effort to split the district into realistic community sizes will be the best solution for everyone, especially our students. Thank you.
Next, we have Linda Campbell.
My husband says to say hi to the old ones. In a meeting, my lecture that was given on September twenty-second, Mr. Perd Peterson referred to a retreat that the city council held in January just after some were sworn in. They agreed that a feasibility study should be done for Orem-only split, and it should be done if the best, if the results were best for kids, teachers, and taxpayers. Quoting Mr. Peterson, "This should be decided by the citizens, not the city council." Yet, I feel like as a representative of the council, there are many people in the, on the council and going to places in the community with information that encourages them to vote yes. And it also concerns me that when I voted for the city council, I voted, I think, through the rotation, I voted for seven council members, not four. And it concerns me that, oh, I won't use that name, never mind. It concerns me that we now have a council of four as a quorum who can pretty much say yea or nay, anything that comes along, and it'll pass. So anyway, I just also feel like the previous one, that the lack of civility and respect in this recent council meetings has been really sad and embarrassing to witness. I just don't remember it ever being that bad. I did have a question. I know you can't answer, but I'll bring it up anyway. I understand from your legal office that the Orem taxpayers have already paid up to forty or fifty thousand or more for a PR firm to educate the public about the feasibility study. And I wanted to know at some point, and you guys can respond back to me, has that PR firm been given any others of our tax dollars to promote this? That was my question. Because as a taxpayer, if I am not a yes person, I didn't approve that. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I just would like to see more civility and a little bit more unification and less name-calling of each other. And I haven't been to all of them, but I've tried to watch as many as I could until I got cut off. And I got that and witnessed that. So thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Jody Sumberg.
Hello, my name is Jody Sumberg. I'm an Orem resident. Tonight, I have two comments. First, my daughter in North Orem shared this story with me of an older gentleman who knocked on their door with a picture he had taken of two teenage boys who had taken their vote no sign. He sent them the picture and told them he had also told the boys he had taken their picture. The next morning, they found a sign on the ground three houses down and presumed it was their sign. I share this because there is a huge battle happening about signs right now on Prop 2. In my five times running a campaign over twenty years on the Alpine School District's school board, signs were always an issue for both myself and my opponent. Very rarely were the missing signs taken by the other side maliciously, but usually by young people doing pranks. One time, a group of girls took a bunch of my signs because they had crushes on my two teenage high school boys. Another time, a prank was made of a young man from some of his friends, and they took signs from every campaign that was going on and put them on his front lawn. These things happen. I would hope that any issues made through hearsay and/or supposition will not be perpetuated by either side. Putting up signs legally on private residences or businesses is best done when permission is granted. And putting up signs on city property should always be avoided. Second, my experience from twenty years on an elected board has given me many opportunities to have training and do trainings about the open meeting laws and the importance of following the law. I have been very disheartened over the last several months that the mayor and three council members have chosen to disregard the law. These laws held conversations with the quorum outside of official closed meetings regarding creating resolutions and other policies while not including three of our council members, changing agendas without the knowledge of the council members, and having these members find out the change from others. I have also been shocked at the attack during public council meetings directed toward your fellow council members when they are in opposition of your views. I would encourage this council to, at the least, have in-depth training on ethics and open meeting laws and seek to restore the trust in you, our elected leaders, that Orem citizens have come to expect. Thank you.
Stephanie Bezner.
I very much appreciate each one of you for having the best interest of Orem City and its residents at heart, whether you have agreed on an issue or not. The mayor and the city council have taken on some very difficult and important issues this year. And residents, I look to you as a council for information, representation, and leadership. When issues such as Prop 1 and Prop 2 are on the ballot for citizens to vote on, it is my opinion that the city council should remain neutral. As stated in the last city council regarding the resolution on Prop 1, and I'm paraphrasing, neutrality does not mean that one is wishy-washy or fence-sitting. It means that personally, each one of you should have and hopefully have your own opinion, but as a council, remaining neutral to accommodate and encourage discussion from both sides, creating a civic dialogue. Looking to the council for information, representation, and leadership means to me that citizens feel comfortable in contacting anyone on the council with questions and concerns and are met with fair, unbiased, and respectful answers, referencing resources individuals for more specific details who may have a certain bias to be referred to. Today's resolution on Prop 2 is not necessary. You would have to be living under a rock at Orem City to not know how the city council feels about Prop 2. A resolution, one way or the other, can be viewed as a statement used for political purposes, swaying voters. I know that the education of our children is very important to each and every one of you on the council, and for that, I do appreciate it. While I'm not a fan of the resolution, the mayor and the city council continue to have my support as you take on these very important issues in Orem City. Thank you.
Tim Stay.
Hi, my name's Tim Stay. I'm a resident of Orem. I've owned several businesses, raised my family here. For about eighteen years, I was part of the parent-involved part of the community council structure that the state has implemented. I've been community council chair at Lakewood Junior High at Orem Elementary and at Mountain View, and got to work in the trenches, seeing how we could help impact academic performance. And part of the parental group that helped turn Lakewood Junior High from one of the lowest-performing academic schools into one of the top-performing academic schools in the state, not just the district. So I've got a real vested interest in academic improvement for our children. And in all the studies that I've looked and read, I haven't found any studies that have really convincingly said that moving to a smaller district improves the academic performance. In fact, a study from the Iowa Department of Education looked at the impact on student size upon student achievement, and they found, quote, "There's almost no correlation between the number of students in a district and the percent of proficient students." Also, in the study, it looks at move in Maine where they consolidated smaller districts into larger districts. The study reports, "The primary reason for the action was to reduce administrative costs and trim about thirty-six million dollars from the education budget," unquote. Maine increased district sizes to reduce administrative costs. By creating a separate district, we're doubling administrative costs. Whether it be for Orem students or other, we are adding more administration, which means total education dollars more goes to administration and less goes to teachers. We, my last comment would be looking at a similar city-only district, Provo, which has been its own district. Provo has higher property taxes for education than Orem does. We don't want to go that direction. They've struggled with their finances, while Alpine has maintained one of the highest bond ratings that you can have, and Provo is struggling to maintain even a lower bond rating. I encourage the council to not vote on a resolution tonight, to remain neutral, and I would encourage the citizens to vote. One last item, I was in Salt Lake last week, spoke at their city council, which they felt like that they could broadcast. I don't understand why Orem feels like you can't broadcast citizen comments. Thank you.
John Barrett. Is John Barrett here? Okay. Are you taking John Barrett's place? Okay. Sure. I mean, I don't know what the rules are.
Yeah, they didn't sign up.
I make the rules. Okay, you can come up for John Barrett.
That's hilarious, and I'm sorry, but I came from Salt Lake out here, down here, and I was on the freeway forty-five minutes stuck to get here, and I did not get here in time to sign up. So when I heard he wasn't going to be here, I, well, I asked others if that was okay. So thank you so much. So I have to, first of all, thank you for being willing to consider doing a small school district. And I really have been, I've been following this from the very beginning, and I was involved in the very beginning because I am an educator and I have other things that I'm involved in. But the first thing I need to do is I want to address the first person that spoke about the feasibility. I know there's been a lot, a lot of flack about the feasibility going forward. And I have to tell you that it was done stellar. I was on a group that prior to that had, we had had meetings with other companies that do feasibilities. We had narrowed it down to something else that we were working on. And then when this came about, that group came here. And I take really offense to the people that have trashed the feasibility because it was done really, really well and very well-planned and with information. Along with, I'm also very sad at what has been, I think, I think this is such a monumental event to happen that if people are against it, I've been shocked and sad at the viciousness that has come toward the people who have asked for this. I am an educator, and I've also worked in legislation, and I want all of you and those here to know that it is true that smaller classrooms, smaller city government, and smaller is phenomenal. In the beginning, I, one of the beginning meetings, I did have the opportunity to ask your representative from the Alpine School District Board. I had a conversation, and I said, "I understand in your district in Orem City that there are seven Title I schools in this, in Orem City." And it is true. And I'm like, "Why? Why is there?" Well, her answer was, "They're low-income." I'm like, "So? Does that mean they're illiterate? That they're non-learners? That they can't grow and become amazing people?" No, that's how I know. I know that. And they need smaller classrooms. Orem people are fighting for the people in Orem City, and you all, everyone here, needs to listen and support because Orem City can bring that education to your people. Thank you so much for all you're doing.
Yes, can you state your name? Yes. Marilyn Larson. Thank you. Next, we've got either Deanna or Donna Boyd. Is she here? Yes. Is it Deanna?
It's Donna.
Donna Boyd. Okay, thank you.
My name is Donna Boyd. I've lived in Orem for forty-three years. I've been a teacher in Title I schools in grades K through sixth in California. I've been in meetings where the staff was scrambling to find ways to use leftover monies so as not to lose them the following year. And anyone who questioned that, whether it might be a good thing to come in under budget or economize, was considered the enemy. I'm also a taxpayer. Some of the rhetoric has been confusing, as has been stated that there are those who would have me believe that if Orem goes with its own school district, my taxes would increase as much as fifty percent. The number keeps changing. Am I to believe that if I stay with Alpine School District that my taxes won't go up? My taxes have been increasing regularly every year, as much as two hundred dollars, while in Alpine School District, and now with a potential bond of five-hundred-and-ninety-five million. Am I safe? Who's going to oversee this huge debt, and which Orem will be assessed a large portion? My husband and I are not anti-tax or anti-public education. We just lived on a fixed income. We've been in the same house forty-three years, with one year older each year and no upgrades. Millions of dollars have gone out of Orem into the coffers of the big school district with very little return on our money. One teacher asked Ada Wilson, "How much of this five-hundred-million, ninety-five-million-dollar bond will Orem get?" And she said, "Very little." "Some of the schools in Orem have not been seismic-upgraded and presented danger to our children in the event of an earthquake. I would like my tax dollars to stay in Orem to create a new school district so that we can set a new standard of excellence in our buildings and in the teachings of our children, using our own tax dollars to serve Orem and its youth. I've gone to countless meetings on both sides of the issue and have come to the conclusion this is very much about money. Orem is a well-established community with a solid tax base and has been a very good neighbor to other cities, and Alpine does not want to give up our money. And yet, we are low on the list of priorities for our needs. It would seem that a campaign of fear has been generated to many who really don't know a lot about the issues. We've been told ninety percent of the teachers will quit if Prop 2 passes. The same was said of Jordan School District when Canyon broke away, and in reality, only two teachers quit. It has been said the feasibility study is no good, but I have copies of the resumes of those who created it. For example, the CFO of Larry Miller, a multi-billion-dollar company, and one of the head administrators of the Granite School District, Michael Wang here, who has, anyhow, he created a very special program so that the parents of his English second-language students could learn along with the students, and they got their GEDs in the process. I'll just give a concluding statement. As a grandparent, I want more access to those who serve on the school board so that I can express concern about safety and curriculum. And seven members would provide that. I support a fresh start in Orem.
Next, we've got Samuel Fisher.
Thanks for having us. As many mentioned, there's a lot of signs going up in Orem. I've got a sign in my yard. My neighbor down the street has a sign in his yard. They're the same sign, so that's great for us. But the neighbor on the other side of the street has a different sign. So I guess I'll probably have to go talk to them and figure out something. Probably not starting with that conversation, but figure something out. So, you know, whenever there's these things, especially when there's children involved, like, there's a lot of feelings. There's a lot of very, very powerful feelings. So sometimes it's tough to negotiate through these things. But I actually, I'm actually really, really excited because this is finally the chance to be able to talk through this because if there's this much energy, it means it's kind of been festering for a while and probably a little too long. So as long as we're respectful and courteous and can work through these things, I think this is a really good sign and that Orem can come out of this stronger. And the conversation can continue. If, when we make the Orem School District, that conversation will continue into that. So I'm really excited about that. What I'm not as excited about and what I really, I mean, I don't know what to really say, but I really feel like there's certain people in opposition to Orem School District who have just not been honest and have no intention to be honest about it. And that's where I think the conversation really breaks down. So I'd like to just read for the record the very latest issue that came up with this. This is from Utah Taxpayers Association Statement on Proposition 2 and Orem Vote Yes. An additional statement made on October tenth, twenty-twenty-two, so that's yesterday. "Since our statement on October third was published, there have been accusations that the Utah Taxpayers Association was bribed, broad, bought off, excuse me, corrupted, or paid money for its support of Proposition 2. This is a categorically false statement. It is insulting and slanderous. The Utah Taxpayers Association has not been paid any amount of money by anyone involved in this issue, nor would we accept it. If one were to be curious about coordination on Proposition 2, we would point out that after our statement of neutral position on the bond website from the, excuse me, which is a separate issue, on the bond website from the neutral Alpine School District, our logo and complimentary statements were highlighted and featured. Then, after our statement refuting the fifty percent tax hike claim and in support of Proposition 2, any mention of the association or our statements were suddenly gone." So I'm really hoping that we can have a truly honest conversation. There's been, it seems like some people, if they can't lie, they attack the person who's talking. And if they are proved wrong on that, then they move to the next stage and make up a new statistic, in the case of the one that the Utah Taxpayers Association debunked, which was the rising tax cost. And if that gets debunked, then it seems like they attack the person again. So what I would like you to do is please set the record straight tonight. Please vote in favor of the resolution. And I feel like you do need to take a stand on this to denounce and renounce actions like that. Thank you.
Karen Turner.
I appreciate our mayor and city council voting to allow the citizens of Orem to have a voice in deciding the future of Orem schools and not making this decision themselves, opposed to former mayors and city council. This has been a great opportunity the last few weeks to talk with friends and neighbors around Orem and have discussions concerning our schools and students and teachers. Now, more than ever, I can see that Orem really does want to take better care of the physical school buildings. And at the same time, we want to help the students achieve the best education possible and give more support to our overworked teachers. Both students and teachers deserve safer environments, as well as more support in the classrooms. I personally believe that they can, that can only happen if we, the citizens of Orem, take care of this ourselves. We know this can be achieved without putting the citizens of Orem into deep financial bondage. These concerns have been intensely scrutinized by many entities showing Orem absolutely has the financial resources to make this happen. There is absolutely no doubt on that concern. I call on all citizens to review information from both sides of this issue and use discernment as they prepare to vote on this extremely important proposition. This will have long-lasting effects for everyone in Orem. We can do this. I vote in favor of Proposition 2 and appreciate you doing this resolution.
Karen Adamson.
Hi, I'm Karen Adamson, Orem resident. In my comments a few weeks ago, I quoted a friend who said that the best way to help the poor is to not be one of them. I wanted to expound on that because I truly feel that Alpine District is putting Orem in a position where we will be unable to help ourselves. They don't want us to split now, and they have their own reasons for that. But if Orem stays in Alpine District, But if Orem stays in Alpine District, I see that we will soon be in a position of so much debt to the district of what I understand will be about 1.5 billion dollars if the bond passes, and we truly won't have the option to leave. We cannot help our children or be a strong community if we don't have options. Orem needs to be treated differently than the rest of the district because we don't have explosive growth. That is important to recognize. Our stability, if we don't use it wisely, can trap us. Right now, Alpine District cannot provide that for us. Orem residents are willing and able to run a school district. We can use brilliant and qualified people to make this work. Couple of them has spoken tonight. We need educators and business owners working together as a school board to make it work for the long term. We have those people. We simply need to give them the opportunity to rise to this occasion. For the first time in an over twenty-year-long conversation, thank you, the city council and the mayor for giving the citizens the opportunity to do this. That is very courageous, and I am grateful for your efforts to get this done. Thank you.
Jason Jolly.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Um, but I'm more here to speak to the citizens. And I'm just going to put a request out there to put the live stream on. That's kind of weird that it's not on. Just going to call that out. Um, so for me, I'm just going to call the elephant out in the room. The split, to me and my perception, is an ideological battle, not about the seismic fit of our buildings or about, I mean, a lot of different issues that have been brought up. I've also seen animosity brought on both sides and figures swapped and flipped. And so it's made it very difficult, I think, for undecided voters to come to the conclusion, and I would think that if there's ethical questions brought up for either side, that they can take an interpersonal look and try to do better. I think that's worth saying. That's something I try to do personally, and I think that as a city, we can do better as well. Um, I also know that the most important thing is to have the stakeholders who will be the most affected. And that includes all of them. I don't know whether people have gone to the students and actually talked to them, at least in the high schools and middle schools. I don't know, you know, the teachers kind of had their own survey done because I don't know that the city went to them. Maybe they did later, and I'm just unaware of that. Um, regardless of where it lands and how the people vote, I'm hoping that you can consider hiring and considering all the professions that make up the schools, including the social workers, the paraprofessionals, and yes, the administrators. Everybody has a place, just like everybody on the city council has a place. We wouldn't have a city council if there was just one or two people. And we wouldn't have a city if it was just a couple of houses. And so is this really going to make or break us, or is this going to make us stronger? Are we going to get the people the support? For my profession, we deal with mental health. We also deal with connecting students and their families to community resources and also the resources that the school district puts together. And so if a new school district is composed, I would challenge you and the new school board members who will be out there to actually put these things together. And so, thank you.
And the last person on the list is Michelle Lee.
Okay, so if we want to talk about questionable ethics, grammar requests show that Stronger Together is a political issue committee that was founded by school board member Ada Wilson with the help of Rob Smith, the ASD Business Services Manager. They founded this group back in February to fight against the feasibility study before the feasibility study was even conducted. Stronger Together had been dead set on opposing every step of this process with manufactured outrage and defamatory attacks. They are founded on patently false numbers and inaccurate data. This has been proven by multiple independent government agencies. In addition, zero certified financial analysts have backed up these numbers. Stronger Together has been flooding the city with scare tactics and misinformation. Although legally, Alpine School District Board members are required to remain politically neutral, Ada Wilson and Rob Smith communicated about the formation of this pick using their district email accounts. In addition, David Stevenson from the district sent an email to Ada Wilson that contained a list of anti-split talking points to be disseminated. These same talking points have been regurgitated ad nauseam by Stronger Together leadership. Since its inception, Stronger Together has sought to personally defame the many individuals and organizations with whom they disagree. Included in this list is the Utah Taxpayers Association, a one-hundred-year-old independent watchdog association. Stronger Together sought their endorsement, and after looking at the data, the Utah Taxpayer Association concluded what most of us have known, that Stronger Together's data is patently false. The Utah Taxpayers Association then came out in strong support of Prop Two. Despite having just found them credible enough to seek their endorsement, Stronger Together turned around and launched defamatory attacks against the Utah Taxpayers Association. They went so low as to have the husband of a founding board member of Stronger Together falsely claim that the UTA, the Utah Taxpayer Association, was surely paid off. He has since deleted this comment, but screenshots are forever. My question is this: are we really supposed to believe that every single independent organization and government agency and individual that has strongly supported Prop Two is lying? And Stronger Together is the only group in Orem that has the truth? We're supposed to believe that this pick that was started in secret by Alpine School District in violation of Utah State law and ASD bylaws has the only and only existed for a mere one hundred days, has been proven wrong multiple times, is to be trustworthy? More so than the Utah County Assessor, the Utah State Tax Commission, and the Legislative Fiscal Analyst? Stronger Together is a special interest group and the only people who really have anything to lose in this situation. They understand Orem is the cash cow that funds the remainder of the district. They have, and they have been for decades. It makes sense why they've been using district employees and resources to fight so hard. It doesn't make it ethical, but it makes sense. We need to start taking care of our crumbling, seismically unsafe buildings the ASD has been neglecting. We need to stop letting ASD close our schools and sell the land. We need to stop letting tax dollars go towards other cities, while only sixteen percent of graduating students at Mountain View are proficient in math. We need honesty and transparency, and we need to vote yes on Prop Two.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments. We'll move on to item eight point five, the resolution that we're discussing tonight. And this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orem outlining its support for a new Orem School District. Steve, should we read the resolution first and then discuss it, or how do you think that?
That's entirely up to you. You can
Okay.
read it first and discuss it or not read it, just discuss it, whatever you
Okay, I'll just read through it so everyone's on the same page as far as what it says. So you can vote accordingly. All right. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orem outlining its support for a new Orem School District. Whereas the City Council for the City of Orem conducted a comprehensive school district feasibility study that was presented to the City Council on July twelfth, 2022. And whereas the City Council desired to determine through this study if creating a norm school district was financially and educationally feasible. And whereas the 2022 study found that a norm school district is financially and educationally feasible as did the two previous studies conducted in 2006 and 2017. The 2017 study that was presented to the Orem City Council was performed by the Alpine School District. And whereas on August second, 2022, by four, the three majority, the City Council voted in favor of a resolution that permits the residents of the City of Orem, for the first time in the history of Orem, the opportunity to vote to decide whether the City of Orem should create its own school district. And whereas Alpine School District is placing a 595 million dollar general obligation bond on the November eighth, 2022 ballot. And whereas the City Council believes that bonds are important to sustain the growth of a school district, taxpayers in the City of Orem have carried more than their fair share of the funding, as stated by Alpine School District in their 2017 presentation to the City Council and also by the Utah Taxpayers Association in a prepared statement dated October third, 2022. Alpine School District has spent, Alpine School District has sent approximately 174 million dollars of Orem taxpayer money to build and repair schools located outside of the City of Orem over the last twenty years. The 2017 study presented by Alpine School District stated that Orem taxpayers have paid as much as thirty-nine percent of the general revenue bonds, but received just thirteen percent back from Alpine School District to repair, to build or repair Orem schools. And whereas on September thirteenth, 2022, Alpine School District released their allocations for the proposed 595 million dollar bond with Orem paying roughly nineteen point four four percent of the bond while receiving approximately three percent back. And the numbers are the nineteen point four four percent is 116 million that would be paid out, 20 million would be received back. Twenty million received back in the form of two gymnasiums. Rather than addressing the urgent seismic concerns at any of the eleven identified seismically challenged Orem schools, in addition, there was zero allocation shown for any of the Orem's most disadvantaged schoolchildren who attend our Title I schools. And whereas the council has grave concerns that if a new school district is not completely created in Orem, taxpayers in Orem would receive little or no bond proceeds to repair, build schools in Orem, but Orem taxpayers would be obligated to pay nineteen point four four percent or 116 million dollars of the 595 million dollar bond. Whereas the Alpine School District Board has publicly stated that a split is inevitable. And it closely high-free press. Whereas the council has welcomed interest from parents, students, and teachers who advocate for Vineyard and Linden to join a new Orem School District. And whereas Alpine School District provided calculations that an Orem Vineyard-Linden School District would not just be feasible, but successful with a 22.18 to 30.72 ratio of students to tax revenues, the best of all three districts proposed by ASD. And whereas the council believes that a new Orem School District will facilitate neighboring cities such as Linden and Vineyard in joining an Orem to create a new school district. And whereas the council believes that a local school board consisting of seven members elected within local neighborhoods, jurisdictions, boundaries, would prioritize the safety of students and employees in all schools, appropriate curriculum and programs for all students, including special education, English language learners, advanced learners, low-income and high-risk students, specialty and CTE programs for artistic, innovative, and hands-on students, social and/or learning-inhabited students, foreign language learners, special interests, and other students. And whereas the council believes that a new local district would lead to greater parental involvement, increased student achievement, and increased teacher compensation. Whereas the study also found that the 2006 Alpine School District commissioned a seismic study wherein identified schools within Orem that have the highest risk of loss of life. Alpine School District pledged in the 2006 ASD seismic study that poor and very poor-rated buildings or structures would be given the highest priority of expenditures from bonds. Whereas in a 2022, a study was performed by the State of Utah, the US Department of Homeland Security, and FEMA. This 2022 FEMA study confirmed that those schools located within the City of Orem were classified as very poor. Those schools that were located within the City of Orem that were classified as very poor in 2006 and that had the highest risk of loss of life had not been remediated by Alpine's Pine School District. These critical schools remain unfixed sixteen years later, namely Sharon Elementary, Windsor Elementary, Orem Junior High. With Geneva Elementary yet to be rebuilt after its demolition in 2021. The 2022 study added eight other seismic schools to the inventory list of schools in urgent need of seismic assessment and repair for a total of eleven schools in Orem with current seismic issues. And whereas the council believes that safe schools are necessary and protective places for our children, that safe schools are a basic right for all students regardless of incomes, ethnicity, or locale. The safe schools must meet OSHA and other state local regulations for all employees therein. The safe schools foster a healthy learning environment. The safe schools are important places designated for public functions such as voting. And that safe schools are vital places of refuge for the general public in emergency situations. And whereas the council believes that a new school district would be fiscally responsible in the allocation of bond revenues and would immediately seek solutions to mitigate the risk of loss of life to students who attend schools within the City of Orem. Whereas the council believes that local representation would place a high value on keeping neighborhood schools open, on ensuring that employment opportunities be preserved for those employed at each school. I'm focusing on academic achievement for every student regardless of locale or income, and I'm meeting the needs of students, teachers, and the community. And whereas the Utah Taxpayers Association on October 2022 provided taxpayers of Orem accurate information regarding Proposition Two, urging Orem taxpayers to vote in favor of Proposition Two, stating that an Orem district would very likely have sufficient revenue to support itself without the need for property tax increase. The proposed Orem School District bounty has a very robust tax base, and the Orem tax base is valuable and contributes more than its fair share to the Alpine School District. And that Orem taxpayers are justified in seeking more local control over their contribution to education. And whereas the City Council for the City of Orem will now allow the citizens of the City of Orem to exercise their right to vote on the following question that will appear on the November eighth, 2022 ballot. Orem Proposition Two shall a new Orem School District be created with boundaries contiguous with the same as the boundaries of the City of Orem? Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the City Council for the City of Orem, express our support for a new Orem School District, and we encourage the residents of the City of Orem to consider carefully this important matter when they cast their vote regarding Orem Proposition Two. So from that, we'll follow the format that we followed in previous meetings. We'll have this time, I think, we'll start on this side, and then we'll just work all the way through. So if each of you would just like to say whatever comments you'd like to say, and then I'll wrap it up at the end.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Always great to be with the citizens of Orem. Again, what we're voting on tonight is not the split, or not the split. What we're voting on is a resolution that the City Council is making a statement about a particular stand on an issue that's on the ballot, which I do not feel good about. As I said two weeks ago, my concern is not that this issue is on the ballot. I believe that the citizens of Orem will vote to do what is best for the City of Orem. My concern is that as an elected council, an elected body, it may appear that we are trying to influence the voters. We are elected to represent the citizens of Orem, all of the citizens of Orem. The majority of the people that I have been hearing from in the last two weeks, mainly teachers who teach in Orem schools and other concerned citizens who feel differently on this issue are upset that their city council as an elected body, and I'm not talking about individual members of the council having an opinion one way or the other, but that the city council would make a statement, a resolution, is disappointing to them. They are feeling like this is a thumb in the eye of those citizens that may feel differently than this. The City Council was made for the citizens of Orem, not the citizens of Orem for the City Council. In other words, the City Council is here to do the will of the people, not the people to do the will of the City Council. This feels like that the City Council is trying to influence the people to do the will of the City Council. Until we have the election, we don't know what that is. And until then, I don't feel good about an elected body trying to influence the vote. This is simply an attempt for those who disagree and those who agree. Let me rephrase that. This is simply my attempt for those who disagree with this resolution and those who may agree with with the proposition but also disagree that this is not proper for an elected body to take the stand, making a statement. To them, I want those to know that you are being heard, and I plan on voting against the resolution. To them, I want those to know that, that you are being heard and I plan on voting against the resolution. Also, uh, I don't know if this is the proper time, but. I'd like to make a motion that we change some of the wording. In the resolution, do we need to do that? Later or?
You, you can do it at any time, but given the format that the mayor has kind of outlined, it might be best to do that after everybody has commented. That would be my suggestion.
Terry.
Thank you. Uh, I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak tonight in favor of oram creating a new school district. I have a unique perspective, um, having served on the Alpine School District Board of Education for six years. And now currently serving on the oram city council. So I've seen working with, uh, on the school district and working in the city council. And I know what it's like when I was on the school district, uh, board to try to figure out how to distribute money between fourteen cities. To meet the needs of thousands of children that attended Alpine School District. So. Uh, and by the way, many former, uh, school board members have reached out to me and publicly endorsed or and be in their own school district, which is interesting. So I want to do an illustration. So everybody will bear with me here. If I take the three people sitting over here, I'll wake up Bryn, Bryn and Pete and Tess. And if I take the eight of us sitting here on the stand and I take the three folks sitting over here. That's the number of cities in the Alpine School District. Whoa, so hang, hang with me. We're going to go through this. Okay, Bryn, Alpine, American Fork. Tess, you're Cedar Fort, uh, Tom, you're Cedar Hills, Eagle Mountain, Fairfield. Let's see, where am I? Uh, Highland, is that the mayor? Mayor is Highland, uh. Lynays, Linden, I saved or for me, or I, I'm oram. Uh, let's see, where am I? Uh, Pleasant Grove, uh, Jamie's Lehigh, who he lives in Lehigh, so that's fair, Jamie's Lehigh. Uh, let's see, Pleasant Grove, uh, for Steve, Saratoga Springs and Vineyard. Actually, I skipped one. No, I said Alpine at first, Draper. The part of Draper is on the, uh, Utah County side is part of Alpine School District. So there's actually fourteen of us represent. That's, that gives you an idea how big the, this, uh, district is. Okay, so. The thing that's interesting, we are all unique and we all have different needs and different priorities. Each of us are individuals with our own world, our own needs. As is the district. So oram has been the largest contributor to the district for over a hundred years. Uh, Alpine is putting a new six hundred million dollar bond on the ballot. That's a lot of money, folks. Oram will be responsible for about a hundred and twenty million of that. And the district said they're going to build two, uh, third gyms or out, uh, multipurpose rooms. So, uh, call it, call it twenty million. So. Uh, and that's probably generous. It we, it means as taxpayers, we're going to be paying out a hundred million dollars more than what we're going to get back. On this six hundred million dollar bond. Uh, that means, um. Adding to the bond debt that current, the district currently has, uh, the bond that the district, that the bond debt the district will have after this. Bond if it passes and what they currently have about one point two billion. Whoa. Just does not include in interest, interest, by the way, on the six hundred million. Uh, it's impossible for, it'll be impossible for oram to leave Alpine School District if this continues. We'll be so saddled in debt. We won't be able to leave. Uh, I guess it's like each of us individually. You can only absorb so much debt before you're really in trouble financially. The point of no return is when you have so much debt, you can't handle anymore. So, um. While, while I mentioned this, oram and, and there's some great comments tonight, oram has some schools with specific and very important needs. We have seismically unsafe schools for our children and, and for our teachers where they attend every day. Uh, oram is going to rebuild the oram city center. So where you're sitting right now is very dangerous. If we have an earthquake, you're all toast. These are, uh, there's no reinforced rebar in these walls. A builder can tell me if I'm saying that right. It's just, it's just brick. So if we start to shake, we're all in, we're all in trouble. So guess what? The city of oram, we're going to build us a new city center. The city had the money approved. We're not borrowing, Jamie. So I mean. We, we have the money already available, so you don't think we're going to be borrowing for that. But isn't that interesting? The city management, city council and the mayor, we're worried about an earthquake. So we're building a new building. How about the kids in oram? This, this, the school district has known for sixteen years that we have unsafe schools in oram that have not been fixed. So do we want anything less for our children and our teachers than we do the city council? One person told me once, it'd be probably, be better off if this all caved in and the city council was gone. So I, I don't know. I don't know if that's true. Okay. So Alpine School District has known about, it's called a FEMA study that was a, a federal study that was done since two thousand six. And I, so there's been a complaint that I want to just read a part of this. This was a complaint to the Utah State Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. This was a complaint that was filed in July of two thousand twenty-two. Kind of interesting as you listen to this complaint. The Title One schools located within the city of oram have been neglected by Alpine School District. And the three schools have the advanced risk of life, uh, loss, loss of life remain unremediated after sixteen years. Those three Title One schools are located in the city of oram and they've been mentioned Sharon, which was built. Nineteen fifty-four Windsor in nineteen fifty-six and oram junior high in nineteen sixty-three. The study said that those three schools have the highest risk of life, uh, loss of life. Now, it appears those students in those schools don't have a voice. Because that's also our highest number of minorities and low income are in those schools. And they're the ones that, that the district's chosen not to, uh, replace. That's why this, uh, office, this. Complaint's been filed by the Office of Civil Rights by a, a group of Hispanic people are saying, why are our children being, uh, picked out? And, and the other schools have been built in oram, but not these, not these schools. Uh, I'll just mention a couple of other things about the complaint. In two thousand twenty, Alpine School District, we built Cascade Elementary. Cascade element, this isn't another school in oram, Cascade Elementary in two thousand and six study was found, uh. Uh, to having the third lowest risk of earthquake. So it's not near as dangerous as the three I mentioned. With far older and more dangerous schools on the list, remediating issues at Cascade seemed illogical. Now, this is really disturbing. This is part of the complaint. The most startling difference Cascade Elementary is not a Title One school and is located in a more affluent part of oram. In fact, the minority attendance at Cascade is estimated to be less than five percent of their enrollment. Less than five percent of their enrollments minorities and the district said, will we build that school? But the ones with the, with the high level of minorities, they don't. The complaint goes on, I'm just going to take, turn one more part of the complaint. Based on Alpine School District's own data and actions, federal funds have been denied to Title One students. Thus placing these students and their parents at greater risk of life than other children. Our Title One children have no choice. Also, this isn't part of the complaint, but by the way, some of them, English is the second language. Try going to school when you don't speak, you know, this isn't your first language. Many of the people are immigrants. Many Hispanics struggle with language barriers. Our growing Hispanic community does not have the economic means or legislative connections to have their voices heard. Which, you know, why their schools aren't rebuilt. So the last part of this, and then I'll, I'll go on to something else is. Alpine School District's act and practice of discrimination as, you get the point. I mean, I could read it, but it's a very disturbing, uh, complaint that's been filed, that was filed in July with the Office of Civil Rights, uh, against Alpine School District. The six hundred million dollar bond will be built, will be used to build new schools that look like the Taj Mahal. If any of you have family members that live in Eagle Mountain, Saratoga Springs, Lehigh. Uh, if you've seen Sky Ridge, if you've seen Westlake, if you've seen Cedar Valley, these are huge schools. Uh, thank you, oram, because you're paying for them. The, the new bond will pay for more high schools, more junior, massive junior highs and elementary schools. The bulk of the bond money will not stay in oram. We have a, uh, an example, we had a school in North oram. They have no computers. This is an elementary school. But the guy I know in Highland and also Lehigh, they're, they're elementary schools, they're a lot newer and they also have computers. So this man raised some money and they bought computers for all the kids in Northeast oram. That's wrong. We're paying for it, but we're not getting it. Um, this, uh, children in other cities have the latest computers as I mentioned. So now I serve on the oram city council. So now I represent oram's needs. So now I'm not on this, uh, school board. We have to figure out the needs for fourteen cities. Now it's what's best for oram. While I served on the school board, our attitude was you don't tear down neighborhood schools. The neighborhood school my children went to is Hillcrest Elementary, just south of the mall, across, across the university parkway. That's a high percent of minority children. So the children before could walk to school. Ma, and the one we know about, the mother has two jobs, so she's not there when the child leaves her school. She's not there when the child comes home from school. But the child could walk back and forth to school. Now that child is bussed across town. Because the district decided they would sell that property off. They sold the property off, closed, closed the school and bust the child across town. Now what happens to that little child, which English is not his first language, if he misses the bus. Now with this child, he's got an aunt that lives in northeast oram, so he can hopefully someone, he can communicate to someone to call his aunt. That's not right. Alpine, Alpine School District now has a different philosophy regarding oram. Hillcrest Elementary, which I mentioned, Geneva Elementary, another Title One school. And Polaris High School have either been sold or torn down by the district in oram in the last few years. Money from that property did not stay in oram, went back to Alpine School District. Uh, other schools have talked about this on the chopping blocks is Sharon, uh, Sharon and Wizard. This is important to all oram families. Oram, oram should have the right to have neighborhood schools. And any, any of the educators that talked tonight would tell you the advantage of a neighborhood school where your neighbor, neighborhood is joined in that, and united in that school. But the, the, the school I'm talking about where that child is bussed is a two-story school now with twice the population, by the way. So there has been, and, and you, we keep hearing different statistics, but most statistics that, that read, and it makes sense if you, if we're just logical. A major study that I read shows that there's major benefits derived from small elementary and secondary schools. And then it goes on to say why. And the teachers in here will agree with me. When I was on the Alpine School District Board. A teacher came up to me and said, Terry, if I, if you add two more students to my classroom, it's a huge load. It's a huge load to try to teach children. And, and every teacher I've talked to has agreed with that. This major study said that smaller class sizes, smaller, uh, schools, students learn well and often better. Violence and behavior problems diminish, attendance is higher and there are fewer dropouts. So now listen to this quote, I'm going to say it twice. Oram does not have a diminishing population in children. Alpine School District has a diminishing enrollment children population in oram. Let me do that again. Oram doesn't have a diminishing population of children. Alpine School District has a diminishing enrollment. A diminishing enrollment children population in oram. My point is one in five children in oram don't attend Alpine School District. And, and some of you have family members that do this, private schools, charter schools, um, homeschools. Or, uh, they attend Provo High School or Provo Schools. And in my area where I live, a lot of the people in my neighborhood, their children go to, to Templeview High School. Really bugs me. I graduated from oram high, but they go there because their test scores are higher, smaller class sizes. Uh, also, some of my friends, their children now in oram are sending their kids to Provo Schools, smaller class sizes. So looking at how the oram taxpayers or tax dollars are going to be spent and the money going to oram. School district, let the oram city council support and, oh, excuse me, uh, when we looked at this, I'll just talk through it. Uh, when we looked at this, uh. And decided to do a feasibility study, this is the fourth feasibility study that's been done. So some people say, why the rush? Well, it's been mentioned tonight, part of the rush is six hundred million dollars. That's the rush. If we vote to become our own school district, we don't pay, we're not involved or on the hook for six hundred million dollars. We're our own school district. That's a big rush, six hundred million. By the way, the study, there was four studies done in two thousand seventeen. The study was done by Alpine School District. Guess what they found out? It would be feasible for or be our own school district. That was the results that Alpine said. So the two men, and we've heard them talked about that did the study, one was a chief financial officer for a, a huge company in Salt Lake. An auditor, professional CPA, uh, the other person, uh, a decorated educator. Recognized by the Smithsonian Institute by the US Air Force, twice by the state legislature. And given an award by the John and Karen Huntsman as educator of the year. So let's don't be critical of this man's credentials. He's spent a lifetime in education, started with special education. He's also done a number of other, other things that I'll skip through. There's been a hundred and seventy-four million dollars that's left oram since two thousand and six that hasn't come back. Hundred and seventy-four million. Could we upgrade some schools? Could we have smaller class sizes? Hundred and seventy-four million. Uh, this current bond, and I already mentioned this, it'll be over a hundred million dollars that'll leave oram and doesn't come back. Oram has enough money for all the costs. People say, what about the startup cost? We have enough money for the startup cost. Uh, an oram school district would not be raising your taxes. Oram has an opportunity to be one of the greatest school districts in the state of Utah. We have a plan, we could pay our teachers more, we could keep, they will keep the same benefits. They will keep their same pension. That's a state pension. And oram would could keep, could try to protect what we have of our neighborhood schools. All our special needs children would be provided for with at least the same benefits that they currently enjoy. And that is what was found on that feasibility study. Smaller class sizes would help oram address the declining test scores. Oram test scores in our junior high and high school levels are down in the last five years more than the district and more than the state. An oram district would be the twelfth largest district in the state of Utah. We would be a big district. We'd be the twelfth largest district in the state. And by the way, we'd be in the top ninety-five percent of all districts in the United States. There'd only be five percent of districts in the United States bigger than oram at fifteen thousand. There's current legislation that's being proposed by Keith Grover, uh, and that would make it easier for Linden and Vineyard to join us. Uh, I, and you know, we need to first of all make sure oram becomes their own district. And then I think that would make sense. Uh, there'd be something they'd be able to put on the ballot. If oram becomes their own district, all seven board members are in oram. The superintendent just works for oram. Wouldn't that be nice? If you have an issue, you can go to your neighbor who happens to be on the school board. Just a couple other statements. I believe government is always more fiction, uh, efficient when it's done on a local level than us on a state or national level. We, as a city council, uh, voted seven zero to build a new city center. Because we're worried about, worried about seismic issues. I hope we see the same reaction from my fellow members of the city council when we vote to do seismic issues for children. As we did voting for our own necks. So. I, I want, I'll, I'll end with just a couple of comments from Utah Taxpayers Association. We heard some of that tonight, but. They came out, uh, October third and said this other group, the, the numbers they were using is patently false. And they also said it's reasonable to conclude that an oram school district would very likely have sufficient revenue to support it, to support itself. Without the need for a property tax increase. That's a separate independent group. All they do is represent taxpayers. Finally, they said the proposed oram school district boundary would have a very robust tax base. That leads to one final question, uh, we believe that oram taxpayers should consider. If this, uh, claim by the other side, I'm not going to mention her name anyway, was correct. And if the remainder of Alpine School District subsidizes oram to the tune of million dollars per year. Why are they so opposed to oram becoming their own district? If that's true, uh, if one part of an organization is a financial drain, why not, why oppose letting that part go? So the vocal opposition to this proposal leads one to believe that the opposite is true. An oram tax base is valuable and in fact contributes more than its fair share to Alpine School District. Therefore, oram taxpayers, I'm still quoting from Utah Taxpayers Association. Oram taxpayers are justified in seeking more local control over their contribution to education. And the Utah Taxpayers Association urges oram taxpayers to vote in favor of proposition two. I will vote to be part of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Lanay, but we have a request for a bathroom break. And so we'll make that five minutes sharp, and we'll, you'll start talking in five minutes and one second.
Five minutes, okay.
Test, test, test. Got him out. Notre Dame game.
All right, hello, Mr. Alpine, how are you?
Oh, what are you reading? I'm reading Debbie's. Are you reading this?
I need a bathroom with my grandchild, it's a lot. You said yours is too large, wait, mine is too large.
Is he still there?
No.
There's a lot of undiagnosed.
Let's go ahead and reconvene the meeting.
I, I, that's a real thing.
Just gonna steal one of these plugs down here.
There are some extras, if you get, if you get pecking. American pork.
Cedar pork, don't get it wrong.
Yeah, respect cedar pork.
Start talking.
Yeah, cedar pork. With the dab, we just got the dab.
All right, let's get going again. All right, well, we can be in the meeting here, and we'll go to Lanay.
Okay, yes, thanks. First of all, I just want to say that, you know, there've been comments made tonight, I just need to make a statement about that. There's so much out in social media, newspapers, et cetera, that is so completely inaccurate and wrong about Proposition Two. That this resolution informs the citizens of Orem of the facts, which is a definite responsibility of the city council. We, as a city council, can't stand by and be neutral. We have to take a stand about inaccurate rhetoric, and that's my feeling. Over the past twenty years, I've volunteered and I've served in Orem schools as a member of the PTA, as school community council chair twice, I saw someone talking about that tonight, volunteering in classrooms, I've supported teachers in many capacities as a room mom, provided teacher appreciation dinners, an event organizer, I've even helped grade papers in a classroom. I've spent hundreds of hours serving in Orem schools and advocating for the needs of Orem schools. I made many, many phone calls at, at one point, and was successful in getting a forty thousand dollar upgrade for Tempanogus High School's auditorium, a sound and light board for Canyon View Junior High's auditorium, and additional classroom aids at Windsor Elementary. Please know that I know about and I care about what goes on in Orem schools, and I have for twenty years. I've not been perfect in my advocacy. Recently, I was overly passionate advocating about an issue that I was told by a teacher existed in her school that I later found was inaccurate. But I have sincerely tried to help the needs of our schools be addressed and understood by Alpine School District. My intentions and decisions on an Orem School District are purely in the best interest of our children and of our teachers. Orem has a neighborhood elementary school model. Terry talked about this a little bit, and obviously it's important to a lot of people. This means that our elementary schools are designed for four hundred to seven hundred students. It is a model that facilitates and encourages a sense of community around our elementary schools. In many cases, there is an Orem City Park connected to the school. Orem has four freeway exits that divides our city and separates our neighborhoods. Neighborhood schools bring a sense of community, a gathering place, and a connection for families. No matter what your religion, your ethnicity, your friendships, in Orem, you can easily get to know your neighbors because of Orem's neighborhood school model. I love that neighborhood school model. We will lose that model if we stay with Alpine School District. Alpine has stated, stated that their model is building mega schools with eight hundred to a thousand students. Alpine District is implementing this model in the west high-growth areas, and even in Orem with the new Centennial School that has replaced the closed Orem Schools of Hillcrest and Sarah Park. Hillcrest Neighborhood, located south of the mall, no longer has a school in their neighborhood where they used to be able to walk to school. Thankfully, the city had funds at that point and was able to buy that land, and we're gonna put a park there that will help that neighborhood. That school was closed, and the children in that area, many of whom are underprivileged, are now being bussed. Even after four years since the closure of Hillcrest Elementary, many parent, parents have told me that they no longer feel the same sense of community that they had in their old school. I'm voting yes on Prop Two because Orem needs our neighborhood schools so we can continue to connect our neighborhoods, so our kids can walk to school, so our families can know each other, so our principals and office staff can know the names of every child in that building, and so our children can succeed in a small, personable environment. I'm supporting voting yes on Prop Two because Orem needs small neighborhood schools. I want to speak to the teachers for just a moment. I received a letter from a retired teacher, and I'd like to read your portions, portions of it to you right now. She said, "There's a debate going on now in our city, whether to split from Alpine School District. This question seems to generate a great deal of earnest concerns about whether this would be a good idea to put into place at this time, and if this would benefit teachers and students. Can a smaller school district really provide what is needed for students and teachers? As a teacher who has worked in the larger Alpine School District and in the smaller Provo School District, the answer to those concerns I have found is a resounding yes, yes, it can. As I've talked to my teacher friends and heard their concerns, I understand their worry. But I wonder if they have considered that in a smaller district, their voices are more easily heard and responded to. Having worked for the smaller Provo School District, I found that the administration were truly concerned for the welfare of teachers. Now, it is easy to say, well, I know teachers in Provo who don't feel that way. To that, I would respond that I know teachers who are not happy in Alpine. You can always find teachers in either camp with the happy and the unhappy. I will say I loved working in Alpine, but as it grew bigger, I noticed the loss of concern for teacher input. In contrast, I found that a smaller school district had the benefit of being known and appreciated as a partner in education with the administration. As you think about the upcoming vote on the issue of splitting or not splitting, remember, in a smaller district, you will have a stronger voice and the opportunity to create a brand-new learning community that will be a turning point for the students in our city. With the funds from our community taxes going directly to a new Orem district, there will be the resources to provide for and meet the needs of teachers and students. That is the bottom line, our money going to provide for our students and the teachers that care about them here in our city." I really like that. I think she hit a lot of key points. "I've seen you teachers work and sacrifice and love my children and other people's children. I so appreciate your dedication to your profession. I would not be considering this if there were a possibility that you wouldn't have the same compensation, benefits, retention, retirement bonuses, retention bonuses and retirement. Everything that you have now in Alpine, all of it, was included in the expenses, and the Orem District would be able to sustain that. It was modeled out for ten years." "To reiterate, as we learned from the feasibility study, for ten years, the Orem School District will have sufficient monies to compensate teachers in Orem as they are being compensated now, ten years. This was endorsed in a statement from the Utah Taxpayer Association last week. The financials of the feasibility are solid. Our Orem community has always supported education. There is no doubt in my mind that Orem voters will elect school board members that will put teachers first. That will pay teachers what the feasibility says, study says they can be paid. Orem has a strong tax base. I know that change is unsettling. I know that an Orem district will have the best outcome for our teachers. I've learned through study and research that an Orem district is financially feasible and found that Orem District can fund and will maintain the same classes, the same programs, IEPs, DLI, CTE, everything. If anyone's telling you otherwise, they're not telling you the truth. I'm convinced that an Orem district will allow our children to have the educational opportunities and funding that they deserve and that they're now getting. And equally important is that in an Orem district, the decisions that affect Orem kids will be made by an Orem School Board. I've said from the beginning of this process, beginning of February, that my loyalties are with the children and the teachers, and seeking the best possible outcome for them. Over the past eight months, I have done careful and extensive research to determine what that best decision is. I've studied financials of feasibility studies, I've attended Orem PTA and SEC meetings, I've contacted Jordan and Canyon School District parents, educators and board members, PTA members. I invite you to listen to my comments on the, from August second, our August second city council meeting where I outlined all of my research, my experiences and my thoughts, especially about our earthquake unsafe schools here in Orem. I won't go into it tonight. As a side note, on several occasions, I've publicly stated my concerns about our seismically unsafe schools. And we've talked about it here tonight. I'm not gonna state those specifics again. But I believe we're all aware of Sharon Windsor and Orem Junior and what's going on at those schools. I would actually like to put forth a challenge right now to the three council PTA presidents who have come out against Prop Two. Set that aside. We can differ on Prop Two if you want, but I would challenge you to advocate right now to Alpine School District to remediate and rebuild Orem Schools now. We've waited sixteen years, and this needs to be taken care of now. Please advocate for our kids as a PTA. Okay, back to my research, thanks so much, back to my research. I highlighted three points. Orem children, teachers and schools are not receiving all they could from our tax dollars, and our tax dollars are not staying in Orem at an alarming amount. Orem tax dollars need to stay in Orem to remedy that neglect, and the Orem School District will be financially strong and can continue to pay teachers at the same compensation retirement levels that our, and our teachers will be taking care of. The only way that we can rebuild our earthquake unsafe schools, stop the school closures and the selling of Orem School property, and bring stability, not disruption, but bring stability to Orem children is through an Orem School District. School closures bring disruption. Alpine has disrupted four of our schools and has plans to close and combine at least two more. Staying with Alpine will cause disruption in Orem schools. Parents and educators on both sides of the Jordan and Canyon's district stated that they are better off having split than if they had stayed together. than if they had stayed together, and these were parents and educators who were against the split. But they now admit it turned out better for them on both sides. It's time for the inevitable split to happen. It's been discussed for twenty years. The time is now before Orem residents are saddled with twenty more years of a six-hundred-million-dollar bond debt, of which Orem has a hundred million of it. And on top of that, more bond debt every four years that will definitely be put in place by Alpine. Have you driven out to Eagle Mountain lately? Have you seen how much land is out there? They will be bonding every four years, five, six-hundred-million dollars. It's time to protect Orem's children and teachers and use Orem money to rebuild Orem Schools. Orem's stable student population will help Orem teachers to address the specific needs of Orem children, especially of our disadvantaged children. In Windsor, where my kids went to school, I saw that. Alpine School District is overwhelmed with their growth pressures. An Orem District would free, Alpine School District would free them up to address those issues. And then Orem District can be free to restore our schools. It really is a win-win. Alpine's freed up to address the growth pressures in Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs, and the Orem District will be able to focus on our unsafe and underprivileged, our unsafe schools and underprivileged children. I will be voting yes on Prop Two, yes on forming an Orem District, yes on supporting teachers, and yes on lifting and supporting our Orem Neighborhood Schools and communities. It's the right thing to do for our kids, for our teachers, and for our taxpayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laney. Moving down the line, Dave Spence.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Our children are our most precious resource. We need to do what is best for them, our children, teachers, citizens, and our businesses in Orem. I've had many say, "This has been rushed," and as I look back on this topic, it was discussed in two thousand and six, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and twenty-two. All feasibility studies came to the same conclusion. It was feasible for them to break off from Alpine School District. If you don't like the two thousand and twenty-two Orem Study, then let's use Alpine School District's two thousand and seventeen feasibility study. It states, "Bottom line, front question: Is it feasible for Orem to create its own school district? Yes. It is feasible for Orem City to create its own school district as many districts in Orem are in Utah and across the nation are smaller than the sixteen-thousand-two-ninety-two students in Orem." What was interesting, that was on the slide that Alpine Schools District presented to the City Council back in two thousand and seventeen, and it was, the bottom said, "Utah Taxpayer Association." So it's pretty interesting. They're using Utah Taxpayer Association information, and they don't want to have anything to do with them. So that's pretty interesting. They were their friends, but if the narrative changes, they flip. Alpine School District in two thousand and five had fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three students, and today, over eighty-five thousand. It's way too big. In two thousand and six, ten Orem Schools were identified by FEMA with a seismic vulnerability assessment. In two thousand and twenty-two, FEMA did the study again. Four more were located in Orem: Bonneville, Lakewood Junior High, Mountain View, and Orem Elementary. From the two thousand and six study, we still have four schools today on the list: Orem Junior High, Sharon, Windsor, and Geneva that was just torn down. My main concern in these, these are all Title I schools, and it's been sixteen years and nothing has been done. Children and teachers will die if we have an earthquake. It's not when. It's not now, but when? When is it going to do, have an earthquake? And Alpine School District has done nothing to fix the issues. Please keep our children and teachers safe. Alpine School District got sold, Hillcrest and Polaris, and could have reinvested that money back into Orem to help fix these FEMA issues. Alpine School District has been closing our schools and selling the property. We will have no property to build new schools in the future. We're landlocked. Where are we going to build them if they sell our properties? This is a post from Debbie Smith, an Alpine School District retired teacher of sixteen years and also retired from Provo School District for three years. "There's a wonderful opportunity in the works for our city of Orem, and there are different opinions about how we should approach whether or not we should separate from Alpine School District. There have been many false claims about how our taxes will go up and that the Utah Taxpayer Association was bribed and bought off. Both statements designed to engender fear and are insulting and false. The Taxpayer Association has advocated since its establishment for taxpayers, not against us. Fear is a strong motivator, but not an ethical one. It is up to each of us to determine for ourselves the truth of the matter and then vote according to our conscience. But we should vote not based on fear, but on facts. This issue is an opportunity for Orem citizens to have a voice in how we serve our children and our teachers. It is our money. Shouldn't we have a voice in determining how it is used?" Or should we listen to Alpine School District and stronger-together propaganda and distortions of the true facts? They say our taxes are going up: twenty-three percent, thirty-six percent, fifty percent. Now it's fifty-six percent. And Alpine School District subsidizes Orem twenty-nine million, twenty-one million, ten million? So they move the goalposts all the time to meet their narrative. It has to stop. They're not being honest with the citizens of Orem and those followers on Facebook. These are all false numbers to scare you to vote against the split. Do not believe everything on Facebook and the Internet. Their signs are dishonest and very deceiving. If Orem votes to break away from Alpine School District November eighth, creating an Orem School District, Orem will not be responsible for any part of that six-hundred-million-dollar bond. Our taxes will stay the same and not increase with this new added debt from Alpine School District. Vote no on Proposition One and vote yes on Proposition Two. Let's keep Orem moving in the right direction and keep our money in Orem so we can spend it on our kids, our teachers, and their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We'll move on to Debbie Luray.
Thank you. I was concerned a couple weeks ago when we had the resolution against the bond, and this one's made me even more uncomfortable. I really believe we should be neutral. And while technically we're within the bonds of the state statutes, I believe it violates the spirit of the law. We are now at a point of the election where we need to trust our citizenry to research, attend cottage meetings, and make their own choice. That was the main reason to even put it out for a vote. And I've been invited to many cottage meetings, both for and against, and so there are many of opportunities for people to get educated. And I hope people go to both so they can hear the pros and the cons. I do have concerns about startup costs running into the millions that the city would have to bear. And I personally had a conversation with both mayors of Linden and Vineyard last week at the Utah League of Cities and Towns. They are watching, they are waiting, but have made no commitments to joining. There are certainly pros and cons. I've always been in favor of a smaller local control. That's very attractive to me. You know, and personally, I'd love to see a pleasant grow of Linden, Orem, and Vineyard School District. That makes sense. But there are pros and cons, and I'm to the point now where I'm confident that citizens will vote their values after researching with or without this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I don't think long speeches from this city council will change anyone's opinions in this room, so I will refrain from doing so. My neighbor across the street from me put up vote yes signs shortly after I put up vote no signs. He told me, "I like him, and he likes me. He told me he would vote for me if I ran again. We both think an issue should not divide us." In that end, I agree with many who spoke about a desire for civility on both sides of this issue, and I encourage us to continue that. I will be voting no on this resolution in an attempt to stay clear of any hint or perception of impropriety or circumvention of established best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say a few things before we go to a vote. The reason I thought it was important to put this on the agenda was simply because there's so much misinformation. And it's not about, maybe we'll listen to this, and we'll listen to that, we'll make our decision. If you're making your decision based on completely false information, you don't have a fighting chance. And there's a lot of false information out there. So I think in a leadership role, our city council has the responsibility to help guide the people and at least give the people the truth so they can make an informed decision. Because right now, if your source is Facebook or social media or all these different things, there's just an incredible amount of misinformation. So what is, what is the truth? If we as a city council cannot have a discussion based on actual facts, then we are guaranteed to make a bad decision, and this is the most important decision that Orem has made in a long time. Now, this is not complicated. It's incredible how complicated it's become. Alpine School District is trying to get us to sign up for a five-hundred-and-ninety-five-million-dollar bond. Because we represent you, the citizens of Orem, and not Alpine School District, we wanted some simple questions answered. How much do our citizens have to pay? How much will they get back for their children and their schools? These are simple questions, right? Now we have the answers. It turns out that over the past twenty years, one-hundred-and-seventy-four-million dollars have been taken from Orem taxpayers and used outside of our city. Prior to these meetings and prior to this study and prior to these conversations, nobody knew that. Now we know that a hundred-and-seventy-five, a hundred-and-seventy-four-million dollars left Orem in the last twenty years. I was shocked to learn that. I think I'm pretty informed, but I don't think most informed people had any idea that was going on. Why would we pay a hundred-and-seventy-four-million dollars and get nothing in return? It's a simple question. The next part of the question that we wanted the answer to was, if we're going to sign up for this five-hundred-and-ninety-five-million-dollar bond, the largest school bond in Utah history, what does our community get that we can use? The answer to this question is worse. Orem residents are expected to pay a hundred-and-sixteen-million dollars for new, in new taxes and get twenty-million dollars for two gems that we don't necessarily need. So in simple terms, to break that down into black and white, we are being asked to take on just under a hundred-million dollars in new debt and get nothing for our students in return. Nothing. Back in the old days, you used to have conversations about this, this bond and that bond, and was it a good idea? Was it a bad idea? But you compared it to what you're getting. So at least you're getting something, and you're deciding if you want to spend the money for it. This is pretty straightforward. We spend a hundred-million dollars and we get nothing. So now that's shocking to anyone who's paying attention. Has this even been a conversation? I haven't seen this conversation on social media. The simple question has been turned into a circus by the, those who seem to do or say whatever is necessary to keep us locked in Alpine School District. Now, I mean, go sideways here for a second, and then I'll come back, but I must congratulate the Alpine School District Public Relations employee who, who, who worked on this project. At two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars a year, their salary, it is, it appears ASD is getting their money's worth. ASD loyalists put out a hit piece on my dad that was designed to change this conversation from what we should be talking about, a hundred-million dollars for nothing, into an effort to demonize my dad. And because I don't know how long he'll be around, I want to bring this up. Let me, let's demonize my ninety-three-year-old father, who just lost my mom. Let's demonize a man who's an Air Force veteran, who spent twenty years of his life defending our country and your First Amendment right to free speech. Let's demonize a man who's always defended his faith and served in significant church leadership callings for the last thirty years. Let's demonize a man who was a highly respected psychologist in the state of New Mexico and taught at Eastern New Mexico University for years. Now, after seeing some people twist his prayer into something negative about teachers, since he used to be a teacher, I asked him last Sunday when I went to see him what he meant when he said there was evil in the schools. Because I didn't know what he meant. I can't read his mind, contrary to, you know, what's said. He said that he was shocked when he saw a recent report showing over forty books containing pornography in Alpine School District libraries. Since no one has bothered to ask him why he said what he said, I did. The porn in the schools was the evil he spoke about. He was not going after the teachers. That was a complete made-up construction by the other side, and I resent that. This was just another attempt by ASD loyalists to try and change the subject from what should be being talked about. Now, this is not a political game, but seems like some are intent on making it one. Most of the outspoken leaders on the ASD side of this conversation have fought against our city council ever since we were elected. They fought against this when we put policy in place to protect family neighborhoods. They fought against this when we changed zoning and stopped ten thousand apartments from being built on State Street the first month we were put in office. They fought against this when we pushed back on putting the BRT bus down State Street. They fought against this when we established a transparency website. I don't know how you twist that, but they fought against it. When we, they fought against it when we restructured the planning commission and how the city commissions were elected or selected. They fought against this even when we decided to move forward with a new city building without any additional taxes. Amazingly, they even fought against this when we rebranded Orem as Family City USA and made that slogan a priority in all our decisions. Now, there are three groups, in my mind, there are three groups that oppose the split. The first group just doesn't like the idea. They don't want change. And I completely respect that. At least they're honest in what they're doing. That's how they feel, and I completely respect those feelings. The second group, which are the voices from the past who are ASD loyalists, seem willing to do or say anything regardless of whether or not it's true in order to keep Orem from splitting. That's the group I have a problem with. The third group are people with good intentions who simply don't want to see their taxes raised. I mean, do you want to have your taxes raised? Obviously not. Many of this group have a sign in their front yard that says, "No tax increases." So they really believe that if they vote against this school district, they're not going to have tax increases. They've been told that. They've been told that over and over, and they believe it, and that's a problem. My message is to the third group. They're being severely misled, and I believe if they knew the truth, they would be in favor of a new Orem School District. One side is running a campaign based on fear, and the other side's running a campaign based on facts. ASD loyalists refuse to accept the results. I mean, we just started all these things we don't believe in, and now, in the last few months, we, well, we don't believe in the DEC feasibility study. We don't believe in the two thousand and twenty-two FEMA earthquake study. We don't, so we don't believe in FEMA. We don't believe in the two thousand and twenty-two Utah Taxpayer Association analysis. You know, but they were credible up until this. I mean, actually, just a few weeks before. They don't believe in the input from the Utah County Assessor, Utah State Tax Commission, Utah State Board of Education, the Office of Legislative Fiscal Analyst, and they don't believe the twenty-seventeen Alpine School District study or the two thousand and six study, and I could go on, but I'm not. So a simple question, this is back to simple because this has gotten very complicated. A simple question, if we double Orem's debt and get virtually nothing in return, do you think taxes will go up or go down? Obviously, taxes will go up significantly if we double our debt. If Orem had been allowed to split from ASD twenty years ago, what would the results have been? Because they had this conversation just under twenty years ago. The results would have been a hundred-and-seventy-four-million Orem taxpayer payments would not have left Orem to other cities. That's the last twenty years. Going forward, based on this new bond, ninety-six-million of upcoming taxpayer payments would not be scheduled to leave our city if this bond passes. In total, two-hundred-and-seventy-million would have stayed or be staying in Orem to create an amazing school district without all the problems we have now. I mean, with two-hundred-and-seventy-million dollars, you can do a lot. How can any rational person believe that taxes would be higher if we still had control of our, of two-hundred-and-seventy-million dollars of our tax dollars that leave our city? So then we're down to the people that say, "Well, this is kind of a good idea. I think we should do a split and Vineyard, you know, whatever." But why right now? But why right now? I just want to do this later. Well, to the Vineyard Linden question, as has been mentioned, legislations is being worked on. I mean, they can be part of our district right now because of open enrollment. But there's also legislation going on that would make it simple for those kids to come to our schools. The problem is, it's not about Vineyard Linden and having a consortium and doing this all at once. That's not what the issue is. The issue is, is we're at a tipping point. Alpine School District, in my belief, is walking us into a debt trap that I don't think we understand. I don't think, think that, I don't see this talked about anywhere in all the, the concerns and the conversations. So what is the A S D debt trap? Alpine School District tells Orem, there's no reason to leave now. What's your hurry? Why don't you do it later? Our current share of the A S D debt is eighty-three million dollars. That's manageable. Right now, with that eighty-three million dollars that we're carrying in debt, it's more than feasible for us to create a new school district with this current debt load. In November, this November, with their gigantic new bond, A S D is trying to sell this with an additional one hundred and sixteen million dollars in additional debt in exchange for these two gems. This new debt would more than double Orem's current school debt to two hundred million dollars. But we would get nothing meaningful to show for it. So we go from eighty-three million and now we can do it to magically wave a magic wand. Now we owe two hundred million and nothing really changed in our, in our schools. If we don't leave Alpine District now, before the, the new five hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond is passed, we sink into the A S D debt trap and no longer have a choice whether or not we can leave. As long as Orem citizens believe that doubling their debt without getting anything for our students and families is a good idea, A S D will continue to layer taxes on us while they laugh at the stronger together signs claiming no new taxes in our front yards. Why would A S D loyalists want to keep us stuck in this self-insposed status quo? The feasibility shows that our children's test scores are bad and continue to decline. Why isn't there, aren't there any conversations about that? I haven't seen any conversations about, I mean, it's a serious problem when your test scores are declining at the rate they are. We're not talking about that. But this is a major issue for our children's future. Are we just going to ignore it and hope it goes away? Why don't we care if class sizes are too high? And, and not only too high, but they're projected to increase. How's there nothing in place? There's no conversations about that. How come in Orem, we've got forty-two percent less specialty classes than the rest of the district? I mean, was there a reason that we just, that just happened to Orem even though we paid the bulk of the taxes? How long are we willing to wait, as, as has been mentioned lots, to, to fully repair our unsafe seismic schools? It's been sixteen years since the first report came out. How long do we have to wait? What are we waiting for? Lastly, our minority and low-income students are being left behind as shown by their test scores. If you want to see what's going on, dive into test scores. The current five hundred and ninety-five million dollar bond gives lower income students in Orem nothing, not one cent. Please explain to me how that's compassionate. It's a problem. So why don't we want to fix any of these serious problems? Going one step further, we don't want to fix any, any of these problems, but we're willing to embrace a hundred million dollars in new debt while getting nothing for our kids? To be clear, I'm fighting for you, the citizens of Orem, whether you appreciate it or not. I'm fighting to keep you out of this debt trap. The last debt trap you walked into was Utopia in two thousand four. That was an eighty-five million dollar debt. We had a major conversation about that. Now we're talking about a hundred million dollar debt and it doesn't matter. Well, where are we at on the, the Utopia debt? We're still paying for it and will be for years. Financially, that was a disaster at that time, but at least we got something. We got fiber in the ground. This time, we're doing a bigger debt than Utopia and we get nothing. And at the time, Utopia set the record for bad financial decisions. So going forward now, are we really willing to support Alpine School District at the expense of Orem? Because that's what it comes down to. At the expense of our children's future, this is the two hundred and seventy million dollar question. Would somebody like to make a motion? I make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I make the motion that this, that the city council adopts a resolution of the city council of the city of Orem outlining its support of a new Orem School District.
I second that.
Can we have a vote?
To the resolution, I vote nay.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Oh, sorry. Did I skip you?
Yes, nay.
Are you guys done?
I said nay.
I said nay as well.
Okay, thank you. The resolution passes.